We'll call this meeting back to order with the, start with pledge of allegiance.
Hello, my name is Zoe, hello, my name is Zoe Gray. And I. Hello, my name is Zoe Gray and I am a first grader at Mcclair Elementary.
Hello, my name is Greenie Gray and I'm a third grader at Mcclair Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was fun, Dr. Gray. Thank you for sharing your children with us. I think your son has a deeper voice than I do, has his third grader. Okay, we're ready to adopt the agenda. Entertain a motion.
A change. Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? So Dr. Morrison offers a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Munoz?
A change to the proposed agenda. I'd like to make a motion to remove item 10.1 from the consent agenda and to have voted on separately due to a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. We have a request to remove 10.1. Is there any discussion on that? Motion. I guess, do we have to approve that? Or do we just do it? I guess this is still a discussion, so we can approve the amended motion. Any other discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote, Mrs. Lister. Thank you, Mrs. Lister. Next on the agenda is a public hearing to comment on our 2021 budget, which was published. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, Mike. So now we'll entertain a motion to. Yes, so. Does he need to move now? Or does he need to remove when we actually vote on the consent agenda? Okay, so. Right, so when we vote on the consent is where he really needs to leave. Is that correct? So.
Dr. Mickelson, it's Lori.
Thank you, Lori. I'm already here, please.
Yeah, so he would, he can vote on the consent agenda, but then when you vote on the 10.1 separately, he would need to leave the room and then come back. So he can vote on the consent agenda, just not, you would have to make a separate motion for 10.1 and he would leave at that point.
Right, but we're not voting on the consent agenda right now. We're just voting, adopting the agenda.
Oh, nope, then you're good. He doesn't need to leave.
Right, so he's welcome to come back. And then when we vote on the consent agenda is when he will recuse himself.
No, when you vote on 10.1.
Yes, yes, that's correct. Yeah. We've adopted, all we've done is adopted the agenda. We haven't voted on the consent agenda yet. Right? Okay, yeah, so please invite Mr. Munoz back in. Right when we do the consent agenda. Yes, that's correct. So we have, the motion was to approve the agenda and separate out 10.1, which we, we had a motion, a second, and we adopted that. So I think we're good to move on to the next agenda item. Is that clear? We will, and just a moment, we're going to do the public hearing first. Okay, so. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on the 2021 budget and this budget was presented at our last meeting and published in the Capital Journal more than 10 days ago. And so I'll declare this public hearing open and we'll see if, I think the invitation was to attend in person. So we have a person at the front door going to welcome anyone who wants to come and comment on our budget. So we'll wait a moment and see if anyone wants to say anything. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Doesn't appear that anyone's here to comment, so we'll declare this public hearing on the 2021 budget closed and move on to the next agenda item, and that is public communications. Do we have any public communications, Mrs. Lister? So now we're open to entertain a motion of business by consent and with the exclusion of 10.1.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent with the exception of 10.1 personnel report and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign a special project of purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. We have a motion. We have a second. This bully offers a second. Any other discussion? I don't see any, so Mrs. Lister, we're ready to vote on the business by consent. Thank you, Mrs. Lister. Now, Mr. Munoz, if you'd like to excuse yourself, please. And entertain a motion to approve the personnel report, item 10.1. Dr. Morrison offers a motion. Reverend Williams offers a second. Any other discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote. Thank you. Dr. Anderson, would you invite Mr. Munoz back in, please? Thank you. Next on our agenda is superintendent's report, safety and health protocols under COVID-19.
This evening, we are pleased to have with us some guests this evening. We have both Dr. Pizzino and Dr. Cooley with the Health Department. This evening, as you recall, last week, we talked about instruction and we talked a little bit about our phases and how we're preparing. We had some wonderful teachers with us to talk about that. This evening, still very wonderful people, but they are from the Health Department. They're going to introduce themselves and share a little bit about what their role is with the Health Department. And with that introduction, we will begin to have conversation about what health and wellness looks like. We sent Dr. Pizzino some questions to help guide some of his conversation. He'll give some overarching comments and have the floor. It's wonderful to have Dr. Pizzino back because those that did not know, he was previously a board member in Topeka Public Schools. And so great to have him back on this, in this space. The other thing that I will mention, last week, we also had on Facebook, this is a live meeting, so on Facebook previously, we had questions that were submitted and we answered them because we know anxiety is very high. In the interest of continuing to move forward with the board meeting, we don't normally do that, but we did last time. This time, if you have questions and you pose them, we'll collect those and we'll put those on our frequently asked question list. What we did add is a staff frequently asked question list, and we certainly have one still for parents. And so while you might not have the answer this evening, know that that will be answered in the FAQ, but we ask that you first listen to all the presentations and that might answer your questions before you ever ask them. With that, I turn the floor over to Dr. Pizzino and Dr. Cooley.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, everybody, and I'm really honored to be back in that room, even though just virtually, where I spent just a brief few months several years ago, when I was appointed to complete the term of a board member who had to face out because of a newly encountered conflict with his job. That was enough to give me a lot of appreciation for the work that the school board does. I can't think of more dedicated people than those who run for that office and spent hours and hours during their week to do school relating work. And I know they don't do that for pay because when I was doing that, there was no paycheck, and I think that's still the case. So really heads off and all my respect to you. I would like to introduce also Dennis Cooley to you, and he has worked for the Health Department for just a few weeks as a consultant. It's been extremely helpful for me, very well-known member in the community. Dennis, do you want to say just a few words?
Yeah, hi, everybody. Some of you may know me. I've been a pediatrician here in Topeka, Kansas for 40 years. Took a leave of absence from my practice. I actually was semi-retired and was mainly working in our walk-in clinic in my practice and took a leave of absence from that and now spending time trying to, to help out with the Shawnee County Health Department COVID-19 Response Team. And so I want to thank everybody for inviting us and hopefully we can answer some of the questions that you're going to have.
Thank you, Dennis. So as Dr. Anderson indicated, I know you have a lot of questions, and so I'm going to keep my introductory remarks really very brief, just to give you a little bit of the background of how we got where we are now and what is the role of the Health Department and the role of the school district, is the way that we interpret it. Starting already several months ago, we from the Health Department, actually, I would say from the COVID-19 Response Team, because it was more than just the Health Department, we initiated a series of regular meetings with the school districts and school administrators. Activities, of course, intensified in the last few weeks in preparation for the reopening process and I got involved directly just about a month ago. And so the three main people right now that are involved in this effort are Dr. Cooley, myself, and then Krista, who some of you may know, who has long, long career in school, is a school nurse, mostly in semen, but was also working at KDHE at some point. And so I think we have a great team and we are very well positioned to do what we need to do to support you, because really that is our role. And we have several discussions at the beginning with these meetings. We have regular meetings every Wednesday morning and what I said since the beginning was, it is not our job to tell you how to do your job. You are the educators. You know how to do that. You have prepared wonderful plans on different models, instructional models, depending on whether you can bring all the kids back into the school or you're going to do remotely, hybrid. And our role is really to support your decisions. There is a reason that we have school districts in this country and that the schools are not governed by county boards. And we want to respect those reasons and that respect of autonomy. So when it comes to decisions on, you know, the typical question I'm asked sometimes, not necessarily by school administrators, but it's, so are you going to let schools reopen? And my answer is, it's not, it's not my call. To be fair, it could be. I mean, I'm the local health officer, and I guess I should have said that first. I wear multiple hats professionally right now. I had started on my path to semi-retirement and so my main job is with the Kansas Health Institute, but I've been the local health officer for Shawnee County for about 12 or 13 years, I think. And things have changed dramatically since March of this year. So right now, that's essentially one of my almost two full-time jobs. But as a health officer, I know I do have the authority to close schools and you know that too, because I did that, right? We did that in March. We were one of the first counties that shut down their schools and that was right after students came back from school break, from spring break, because we were concerned that all the districts had scheduled their spring breaks the same week, which is a great idea in general, except in that situation, because that meant that all the students had traveled, many of them outside of the state, in states where we knew there was already a lot of transmission of coronavirus, and now they were all coming back into our own county schools all at once. So we made a decision and then the state, a few days later, did that at the state level. So I know we have that authority, but we really don't like to exercise that. We would reserve that only in case of extreme and urgent public health threats. And even that, I would hope that a conversation with the school district would probably take care of that before we have to issue orders to, to shut down schools. So that's really one extreme that we know it's, you know, it's not off the table, but it's definitely at the very bottom of our list. Our preferred way to operate in this environment is that we provide the public health information and background, and you, as school administrators, based on that, plus other considerations, make the decision about how to provide the instruction, the best instruction you can to the kids under the current circumstances. And that's really what we have been working on for the past several weeks with all our schools in the county. So I'm sure you are familiar with some of the documents, documents that have been released by the state, both Department of Education and KDHE, that really indicate different options and those are just guidelines in general. But almost uniformly, what they strongly recommend is that the first element for schools to take into account when making those decisions is the level of transmission of the virus in the community. In other words, how, how bad is that outbreak right now in this community? That's the first element to take into account. It's by far and large not the only one, but I would say the first, and you know, perhaps allow me my public health bias, perhaps the most important one, because it's important. And the reason it's important is something we are experiencing right now in Shawnee County. When the level of transmission is too high, there is no way on earth with this virus that we can keep it outside of the places where we do not want the virus to go. And we are experiencing that right now in Shawnee County. We have too much virus circulating. We have too many cases and those cases are spilling over into nursing homes, for example. We have been very successful in protecting our nursing homes for the first several months of the pandemic and we work really hard for that to happen. And frankly, the main reason we're able to do that, it was a combination of good communication and coordination with nursing homes combined with our efforts at the community level that kept the transmission of the virus relatively low. Without going into many details, I will just tell you that we are now in a situation in Shawnee County where number of cases have, has increased considerably in the last few weeks, two or three weeks. And so we have much more virus circulating and as a result, surprise, surprise, now we have cases and even outbreaks in nursing homes. I think the same situation is going to apply to school environments. As long as we can keep our virus circulation low in the community, if schools implement good protection measures that we are discussing with them, we are helping them implement, they should be able to use their plans and make good decisions and have good instructional models, even in the middle of a pandemic. On the other hand, if the level of transmission remains high, even if it remains as high as it is now, to be totally honest with you, or even worse, it goes higher, I think it's going to be really difficult to keep the virus outside of our schools. So that's the part that we can contribute to. We can do that assessment of community transmission and community severity of the pandemic and provide that information in real time to the boards or the administrators for private schools for them to make their decisions. There would be other factors that would be taken into consideration by school administrators. One of them is the specific situation in each school. If a school is experiencing already multiple cases of coronavirus in recent past, possibly the decisions made in the school may be different from a school that hasn't had a case for the past two months, even though both schools are located in the same community environment. Level of absenteeism in the school, general absenteeism, that may be another consideration to take into account. So that's why we really don't want to make those decisions for you. We just want to give you the tools that you need to make your best decisions based on your own circumstances. One thing that we have worked on in the last few days, and I'm really excited about that, it's, actually, it's taken a couple of weeks of work and exchanges with, with school boards and administrators, is a document called School Outbreaks and Triggers. And that document has been finalized today and will be released tomorrow officially. So Dr. Anderson and her staff have already seen a draft of the document, provided input, but the final version that will be made public will go out tomorrow. And that document has two parts. The first part is what we called a Community Transmission and Severity Indicator Scorecard. The scorecard is, well, what the name suggests, it's a scorecard, which includes six different items that combined can give a good indication of community transmission and severity. And those are things spanning from how many cases we had in the past two weeks to what is the trend in the past two weeks, going up or going down or stable? How many, what is a percentage of positive tests out of all the tests done on Shawnee County residents that we have recorded in the past two weeks? How many cases we have for whom we know where they got infection as opposed to cases that are just community acquired? And of course, we want to know where people got the infection as much as possible. When we don't, it's probably an indication that there is a lot of virus going around that we don't even detect. And you know, I won't go into so many other details, but, but those are the six indicators. And then each indicator can have a value from low to moderate, to high, to uncontrolled. So the four bands, and you may recognize the model, right? Because it's the same model that's in the gating document that I'm sure you are familiar with right now that was released just the last week. It's not by accident. We have tried to model our documents around those that have been produced at the state level. So every week, we are going to update those indicators and to place them based on their values in the column where they belong. Low, moderate, high, or uncontrolled. So green, yellow, orange, or red. And then we give them a score. We do some math, very easy math, and based on the total number of points for each indicator in that week, we will obtain a total index score of community transmission. And the score can vary from zero, that's the best case scenario, that's when all the six elements are good, they are all in the green area, and it can go as high as 24, when all the elements are in the red. We have an example in the document that we are going to send out tomorrow of how that will work. And interestingly enough, actually, that example is the actual scorecard for this week. So it's not just a theoretical example. And before you ask, I can tell you that we are now in the orange zone. So that's no good. We don't want to be in the orange zone because we are getting dangerously close to the red part. Red zone is really, the red zone is where we should really seriously consider restricting a lot of activities in our county to stop that transmission. We are not there yet, and I'm not saying we are going to get there, but we are in the orange zone. So that's something to, to keep in mind. We will update that every Thursday and push it out to all the schools. We also made and push it out to all the schools. We also make it public on our website. So this is not just something for the schools' use. It's something that we can use, for example, the health department to decide if there are additional preventive measures that need to be implemented. Or some that have been implemented and now can be relaxed because the numbers are looking better. And then schools will take that index score into consideration as well as all the other elements and make their decisions if there are any adjustments in their educational model they need to make. We do recommend schools to not bump up and down every week. So we recommend that they make adjustments not more often than every two weeks unless there are excruciating circumstances in which, you know, we really need to take action like right now. So you can't wait until next week. But I really hope that that's going to be the exception. And the reason is that we want to minimize the disruption in the school environment of going back and forth from total classroom instruction to hybrid to at home, now back to the classroom, then a week later you change again. It's going to be very disruptive for everybody. So that's the first part of the document. It's our scorecard. The second part is Action Triggers for Isolation Quarantine and School Closures. That's, that's a table with a series of different case scenarios from a single isolated case in a student to a single isolated case in a staff to multiple cases in students in the same classroom, multiple cases in students in different classrooms and all the different permutations and combinations. And for each of those categories, we have a definition and then we have the actions triggered by that event. So what schools can be expected is going to happen, can be expected to do and can expect is going to happen if there is any one of those situations in, in place. Within, again, I think I, we got good preliminary feedback. I think that's going to be really helpful. At least schools have any idea, they understand that it's not like the entire school is going to be closed if you have the first case of coronavirus. But it's also that, you know, if you have multiple cases, you may have to consider closing, closing down the school. And so all, all the different things in between, in the middle. So let me stop there. I hope that this maybe answered a few of the questions you already have, but I suspect you have many more. So I'm going to pause and see what, what, what else you want to know from us.
As he pauses, we're going to pull up the criteria, but it's not the scorecard itself, but the various areas which the weekly cases, the trend in the county, the percent positive tests, new cases, hospital capacity and for schools absenteeism and staffing. What can we open schools with the appropriate number of staff in place? Those are all things that we are looking at. So our scorecard will be what the health department produces. So when they produce their scorecard publicly, that then will become our scorecard, but our addition to that will be the issues related to staffing and absenteeism, which is why we are waiting so that we are in total alignment. We're going to turn this one over to our board president to continue with questions from here. And thank you, Dr. Pizzino.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Pizzino, for your service to our community and also Dr. Cooley. Are there questions for these two gentlemen? Ms. Stuart Campbell.
All right. Well, first of all, gracias for being here, Dr. Pizzino, and speaking to us and taking our questions. So I did read through the document Safety and Health Protocols under COVID-19. And I, and I read about circumstances where we might have school-wide testing event. I'd like to know more about what that, what that would look like, like. So Dr. Anderson or Dr. Pizzino or?
If I may start, Dr. Pizzino, we at this time do not have plans for school-wide testing events and I don't know that that's a a suggested task to take. I'll turn it over to Dr. Pizzino regarding whether it's suggested or not. I will say that the University of Kansas clinic is located in Topeka High. They have the ability to do COVID testing if a person has symptoms. And certainly the Shawnee County Health Department has that ability. But in terms of school-wide testing, it's not something that we have planned in terms of school-wide. Dr. Pizzino, I'll turn it over to you regarding any recommendations about that.
Yeah, thank you. I think you are absolutely correct, Dr. Anderson. It's not something that we would recommend as a blanket action for all schools to do. I think there would be very, very, very limited circumstances, if any, honestly, I can barely think of any in which we would ask the entire school to be tested. There are several reasons for that. Now, college environment is a different story. There are, you know, residential units and, and, and things are different there. But in the typical high school or even middle or elementary school environment, doing mass testing on the entire school doesn't produce a lot of results and produce a lot of disruption and requires a lot of resources. What the current test does, it just tells you if the person who's being tested has enough virus circulating to be detected at the time of test. That's it. Doesn't even tell if the person has been infected. Because as you know, there is an incubation period during which the virus levels may be so low that the virus itself cannot be detected. So it really wouldn't serve any purpose to do that. You would have to do, if you do that to know who is infected and who is not in the entire school, you would have to repeat that every five to seven days. Clearly not feasible. And probably even that case, I would argue, the utility of that massive effort would not be would not justify the effort itself. So we do have cases in our document in which we tell the school, consider testing of certain groups. And the typical scenario may be an entire classroom, for example, if you have more than one case in the classroom. And those are described in the document. But the test of the entire school, I think, is going to be very, very unlikely.
If there was a testing of a class, do know that because you have to have symptoms to have a test, Dr. Cooley, in that case, would inform the appropriate agencies that our school, for example, could receive testing under his permission because a class needed testing if that was a need for that particular group. We have explored very briefly with the University of Kansas Health System, since their hospital is in our high school and we're one of the only places in the region with that opportunity. We've explored with them if we needed testing, if we could do that, even if someone didn't have symptoms. And they have shared that there might be for some groups possibilities if in fact it was being funded by another agency because they're not reimbursed unless the person has symptoms if they test those groups or individuals.
Dennis, anything you want to add to that?
No, it's just, you know, even the, the American Academy of Pediatrics does not recommend this type of testing at all. So and just as you said, I think that testing like this tells you a very specific point in time. That's all it tells you. And it really, it's expensive and it, right now, I think, especially with sometimes there's difficulty in getting tests done. It would use a lot of testing materials. And so I just, I don't think anybody right now would be advising to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do you have more questions? Ms. Bowley.
I'm trying to figure a way to ask this correctly. I know that the younger the people are, it seems that they are more don't have so many symptoms or non-symptomatic at all. And we're going to be taking temperatures of our young people coming into the building and of course, our staff. If, if our numbers are so high, how many people in our population right now are probably non-symptomatic and carrying this and isn't this our danger of opening up, bringing all of our students and staff into our buildings?
I, I, I think you are asking several questions in one, so let, let me break it down a little bit. First of all, I would like Dr. Cooley to comment on children and symptoms and essentially the, how the disease shows up in children. And then I will add a few additional things.
Yeah, generally as a whole, and this is as a whole. Children don't have as severe a symptoms as adults do. That doesn't mean they can't get severe symptoms and it doesn't mean that they don't get, get infected. But they tend to have less severe illness. They tend to have less hospitalizations. That has nothing to do with whether or not the transmission, how much they transmit the virus. So even though I, I, I always hate it when I hear people say, well, kids, kids can't get this or kids, kids don't get it bad. They don't get it severely. They can. And while they may not, the percentage of children who get this may not be severe illness may not be very high. They still can get it. So the way they present it is sometime, the symptoms really, that whole symptom panel that we use is the same for adults and children. Children sometimes may have maybe say more GI problems. They may have more of the upper respiratory symptoms. But the symptomatology that we use when we're looking at adults and kids is, is pretty much the same.
Right. So that, that, that's a part of your question. The other part is, you know, about temperature checking and things like that. Let me say, and you know, I may get in trouble for saying that, but I'm not a big fan of temperature checking. And that's a requirement that's included in the governor's executive order. And it's not my role to undo or criticize or modify an executive order from the governors of Kansas, the governor of Kansas. But I would tell you that I, I am perplexed about the, the value and the effectiveness of that particular element in that order. There is a lot of good things in that order, but in my humble opinion, the temperature checking is not one of them. What is good in that order and in any other recommendation that you see from major professional organizations are two major things. One is using masks and the other is social distancing, six feet or more. Those two things alone probably represent the best barriers that you can have for the virus not to be transmitted within your school. Because I can guarantee you, especially with the current level of transmission of the virus in the community, you will have the virus imported into your school. No matter how many times you check people's temperature, the virus will come into your schools. You have no control over that. What you do have control over is how easy you make for the virus to be transmitted from person to person. And the way to make that really hard is to keep six feet distance all the time or as, you know, as much as you can and using masks. Those two are the two most important parts.
I think there was a question about asymptomatic numbers too. Is that, am I correct on that?
Yeah. Go ahead, Dennis.
Well, I don't think we, we know for sure how many and the studies, we're, this is a new virus. This really is new and we're learning more and more as this goes. And initially, there wasn't, there was thought that there wasn't much asymptomatic infection and there wasn't much asymptomatic spread and we're finding out that that's more and more. But it's always difficult, I think, to really know. There's been estimates of, of percentages that if I'm not mistaken, around 30 to 40% of the people who are infected, not of all the people, but of the people who are infected, that 30 to 40% may be asymptomatic. So that's a whole different number and I think a different way to look at it. You're not talking about 30 to 40% of the whole population that is, that is asymptomatic with it. It's just the people who are positive that 30% or so may be asymptomatic. Would you agree with that?
Yes, absolutely. And interesting enough, the number has gone up over time, the more we learn about the virus. There was an interesting review published just in the last week or two at the most, where they look at different mass testing programs that they, or large testing, I should say, that they did in different situations and and, and they, they put in a table the percentage of those people who were tested who were positive and asymptomatic. And it varies so much, went from a 15% to as high as 80%. And one of the highest, that's really something that I, I find it hard to believe was among sailors on a ship where there were several cases. So they, they tested everybody. And I believe there was over 70% of the positive people were asymptomatic. These were young adults, obviously, you know, there's salesmen, so, so they, they, they are selected, that's clearly not representative of the, the general population in the community. But it gives you a sense of how variable the number is. And we do know that children tend to have tend to be more often asymptomatic, which means they don't develop symptoms than older adults. So when you put everything together, again, it's really hard to know what's going to happen, but, but I, I can all but guarantee you that very soon, within days, the virus will walk into your schools. If not on day one, it's going to be very soon anyway. So that's not a reason to panic or to, to say that we failed because the goal here is not to keep the virus out. The goal is to keep the virus from being propagated from person to person in the school. And then for us, it's public health, of course, in the community at large.
Good evening, Dr. Pizzino and Dr. Cooley, who I both know both very well. I received an email from one of our council members and he quoted the CDC and their percentages of kids who were hospitalized. And his thought was since so many kids are, there, there's hardly any kids that are hospitalized, we should open schools. I wrote him back and said, it's not about kids being hospitalized, it's about kids transmitting illnesses to their parents and their grandparents in an asymptomatic way. I, I assume you would agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah. And can I also add that we spend a little, I think in some ways, too much time looking at deaths and hospitalizations. That's the tip of the iceberg. If you, I mean, you talk to some people who have had COVID infections and they're miserable. They may not go to the hospital, but they're pretty sick. And if you are sick with it, you're out for 10 days and you're, if you're exposed, you're out, you're in quarantine for 14 days. And so you can imagine that if, you know, again, there's a pretty widespread from the schools and just as you said, they take it back to mom or dad or somebody, they're in, either going to get sick too, or they're going to be in quarantine for a couple of weeks. So you know, it's just looking at deaths and just looking at hospitalizations really doesn't, again, that's just the tip of the iceberg.
The other question that I, that I have is testing that's been coming up, an FDA-approved test of saliva in the last two days, I, I think, two or three days. And an article in the Atlantic Magazine about this particular test and the way perhaps we can control the virus with this strip of test. I just wondered if you all had read anything. I haven't seen that in medical literature, but I don't read a lot of medical literature anymore. But have, has that come up to you all at this point?
Yes, we, I assume you're referring to the saliva test that was licensed by Yale, Yale University just a few days ago. And interesting enough, I was just on a webinar today where somebody was describing the test and talking about the test. So that's a good test. That's definitely a movement forward in the right direction. And what that does, it, it bypasses the need to have a healthcare provider collect the specimen because the specimen can be collected, it's just saliva. So it can be collected by the patient and then mailed into a laboratory. The test probably is going to be very accurate. I say probably because it's been used only in a very small number of people so far. But it's the same PCR test, same genetic test that is used for the regular test that is done using a swab that goes into your nose. So from that point of view, it's definitely a good development. I wouldn't go as far as saying it's going to change this outbreak and is going to get control of the outbreak because really the only thing in my mind from the testing point of view that is going to make a huge difference is when we have a test that could be self-administered and can give the result at home within a few hours. That would be That would be a huge change. But in this case, the test is, the specimen still needs to be sent to a laboratory, a reference laboratory. We then have to process the test, so we have the same bottleneck that we have in the current testing situation and then send the results back to the patient. So we're talking about days, several days of time. Good, it's a good development, I'm excited, but I would be real excited the day that we see something like that that does not require to be shipped to a commercial lab. It can be just done and read at home by the patient, like a pregnancy test, for example.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, okay, so based on the criteria and factors that that you two have spoken about and the fact we're currently in the orange zone, so moderate levels, subcontrol. Would you recommend advise remote only at this time?
As I said at the beginning, I I I try to stop a little short from telling schools, you should go to remote only, or you should not go to remote only. If you look at the gating document, I believe when you have yellow and orange, everything should be remote teaching, if I'm not mistaken. I also want to point out that the color categories in our scorecard are not exactly equivalent to the color categories of the gating document, because we are looking really at different things. So again, I think it should be an assessment done at the school and or district level. All I can tell you is that I I hope the schools administrators take that orange scorecard very seriously. Because that means a level of transmission that is very high in the community. And so what they mean exactly from the decision making point of view for the school, it's not something for me to say. But it is definitely a serious situation that deserves a lot of attention.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bowley?
So I have had people discuss just opening up the schools and creating our herd immunity. What are your thoughts around the herd immunity and and the dangers there?
Well, first of all, let me say herd community is good. Herd community is good. We use her, we have used herd community, herd immunity for a long, long time. And and we use it a lot when we have vaccines available for a certain disease. Herd community, herd immunity is going to be really difficult to be used in the absence of the vaccine, though. Especially for a novel virus like this, to which just about everybody is susceptible. And the reason is that it's going to take a lot of cases, a lot of people to get sick and a lot of people to die before you reach that level of herd community. Now, what is the level? That's the main question. The level has been considered up until now sixty to seventy percent. Now, there are different models that just came out in the last couple of weeks. They seem to indicate that actually the level may be quite different in different subgroups of the population. And that's really very promising. It's 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 a very intriguing, I think, concept and idea that the some researchers are, very serious researchers, by the way, are promoting. That's all good, but they're still models. The factor remains that we are still far away at the community and general population level from achieving herd community, herd immunity. I don't know why I keep saying community, herd immunity. And I would say that the price we will pay, if we let this virus go through our community so that we can develop herd immunity, that price would be enormous. It would be thousands of deaths. I did some projections some time ago and I I don't want to quote exact numbers, because it's been a while. But my projection was that based on information we had at the time, it would take several thousand deaths in Shawnee County alone before we will reach a level of of immunity in the community that would be enough for the herd immunity. The other thing to keep in mind is that, number one, we do not know how long the immunity lasts for this virus. There are similar viruses, coronaviruses that cause the common cold. I think you all know that you don't get immune to a common cold just because you get one. You may have some immunity for a certain number of months, but not for the rest of your life. So we don't know how long the immunity is going to be against COVID nineteen. But if it's not going to be lifetime, then you need to go through new cycles of infection in order to keep the herd immunity up. The second thing is that herd immunity is not a static, balanced situation. There are people who come into the community who may or may not be immune, people who leave the community and may or may not be immune, people who die, people who move in and out. So it's a constant movement that makes herd immunity really hard to be used as the main tool to control a pandemic. Once we have the vaccine, I think things are going to change. And we can use the vaccine to our advantage and play the vaccine to increase that herd immunity. But right now, I think it would be just a foolish decision. And there are a few examples, thank goodness, just a few examples around the world where that has been done. The most quoted one is the one in Sweden, that originally was quoted by the proponents of herd immunity and saying, see what's happening, nothing bad is happening in Sweden, they're they are not doing all the things you are doing here. And it turns out that they now are experiencing the highest death rate from coronavirus in the entire Scandinavian peninsula and higher than many other countries in Europe. In fact, so much so that the main mastermind for herd immunity, the worst form of herd immunity in Sweden is now starting to having, to have second thoughts and about the wisdom of that decision.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes, one of my question has to do around moving from phase one to phase two and the metrics that we should be looking at and be aware of before we make and as we make that transition. So what what would your suggestion, what what should we be looking at this this index score? Or are there a particular couple of indicators you think are important for us to be aware of?
I think what Dr. Anderson was was indicating earlier is probably the best answer I would have. So we will provide that scorecard and that's just an indication of how much virus we have circulated in the community. You probably want to add to that a few additional elements that are important for your schools. So again, how many, how many cases have you had in your own schools and what's the level of absenteeism? Both for coronavirus and for other situations. Let's remember we are getting very close to the seasonal influenza season. And and so when you put everything together, if you just don't have enough teachers or or staff to keep your schools open, there's something important to take into account. So I really don't have a magic formula to give you. The best magic I could do is in developing that scorecard and the index system. And then, you know, hopefully that would be a good guidance for you and your staff to make those decisions. We are always available to make those decisions or to answer questions you may have in making those decisions. If you if you want our input, we'd be more than happy to do that.
And with that, Mr. Munoz, the scorecard that he is referencing, we again have taken that scorecard and added our information at the bottom, absenteeism and staffing, meaning meeting or unable to meet staffing needs. And we have our phases also on the bottom of his scorecard. So it will show to move from red or orange, what does that mean in terms of whether you're remote only or not? It will also show from phases, you know, one and two as well. So it will show you how one would move when it is released. But again, when they release theirs, then our scorecard, which is combined with theirs. The other piece that we took was the KSDE scorecard or the gating criteria. And that's embedded within the document. So you will see their comments about student absenteeism embedded in our document. I think you will be able to look at that and firmly know when a person would move and how they might move between the phases. The only thing that I will say is that if we are in phase one for an extended period, beyond five days, for example, when we open on the ninth, then we will assess that if we've been in that phase for an extended period, once the levels drop, we may choose to move from that first phase to allowing all students at some point to return rather than having them come in at levels such as kindergarten right now, sixth grade and ninth grade is phase two. Or if we're in phase one for many days or weeks, we may want to assess when the levels drop at the lowest level. You know, when we can have all students come in rather than transitioning in them in in groups. So that's one piece that we will have some flexibility on. But in terms of how do you move from orange and red, those are those scary phases that are really remote only, to something different. That will be clearly spelled out in our document, which will be at the very bottom and embedded within the document that they have provided. Along with the KSDE document for the instructional piece will also be embedded, which again, you'll receive tomorrow.
Dr. Pizzino, this is Scott Mickelson. I have a couple of questions. One of them is related to the percent positive test as a function of test availability. And I know early on, there is a, there was some concern about where tests available or test equipment, you know, capability. Is that still a problem or is, do we have adequate testing capability within Shawnee County?
So it's, it's not as big of a problem as it used to be, but it's definitely not where I would like it to be. It's, when we started this entire process, excuse me, give me just one second because I want to bring up something on my computer to answer your question more. More accurately, just one moment. Okay, what we had at the beginning was a situation when where we really did not have almost any testing capability at all. And we were only tested, the most sick individuals were showing up at the hospital, that that was that was it. So in this sense, we have evolved a lot. And we are now in a situation where testing is more easily accessible. We have several testing sites in Topeka, Somon Vales and Francis, both have their own testing sites. The VA does their own testing. We have reference labs where private providers from the community can ship their tests. So that's all great. As a result, the number of tests that we are doing has increased dramatically. And we test several thousand people right now every week in Shawnee County for coronavirus. Clearly, the number of tests we do is going to affect the percentage positivity. So if you only test those, if you only test those who are very sick, you can expect that. And and if those people, of course, have symptoms that are compatible with coronavirus, you can expect to have a higher level, have a higher percentage of positives than if you test random sample of people off the street.
And that's my problem with that metric is is how is the test administered? And if the denominator in that equation is small, then your percentage is going to be high, right?
Right, 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 right. And you know, we we keep an eye on that, so we know what the denominator is. And I can tell you in the last several, oh gosh, at least three months, we consistently have done several thousand tests every week. And and that's a level that's adequate enough to say, you know, a percentage positive this week is seven point five. If we had tested a couple of hundred more people, maybe it would have gone to seven point four or seven point six. But that's good enough for decision making. So it's not perfect data, but I feel that it's definitely good enough for decision making. If the test, overall number of tests drops below certain levels, and I don't have a magic number, but but, you know, substantially lower than what it is now, then the metric probably would be less helpful. But we are definitely not in that situation. It's one or two most important elements in monitoring community transmission that people universally are recommending. And the other one being the case, the new case rate, the weekly rate of new cases in a community. That plus the percentage positive are the two most important indicators of community transmission. But you're right, it does require an adequate level of testing. And I think we we are at that level, we have been for several months.
Thank you. My next question is on the Shawnee County Health Department website has a lot of good information on it, but it's not as current as I would like to be with data being two weeks old. And so how do we get more timely data?
Are you looking at what we call the dashboard, where there are different numbers and charts? Or are you looking at the PowerPoint presentations or what exactly?
Shawnee County Health Department Weekly COVID Update from Monday, August nineteenth. But then look at the charts, the last data point was August second.
Right. But first of all, the date represents the first date of the week, not not the last date. So we, what you see August the second, that will cover it through August the ninth or the seventh, the eighth, et cetera. But you are right, that that's not current enough. Unfortunately, with the increase in the number of cases that we have, it's really hard to keep up. And I don't think that many people realize how much work goes with each and every one case investigation that our staff have to do. But we are at the point where we have a contract with a private company to do contact tracing and interviews for us. We have KDHE assisting us. We are in the process to hire some temporary workers who can do data entry. Even with that, we still have bottlenecks. So the delay is almost inevitable when when you have levels of disease at this point. The good news, though, is that, first of all, we hope that we will be able to be a little more timely. And we are working on that. We 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 have several measures and contracts in place already. But perhaps more interesting for you, for the school's point of view, the dashboard that we are going to produce for you every Thursday, will reflect data that will cover the week before the Thursday. What we are going to do, we are going to use preliminary data. We are not going to publish the exact value of each of those indicators. But all we need to know is which of those four brackets that indicator falls. And after four days, we have a pretty clear idea where that falls. And so we will be able to give you real time information like we have, we haven't been able to do before. But for something more precise, like the PowerPoint presentation, right now, the delay is still seven to 10 days, unfortunately.
I I appreciate the effort and the work that you and your your team have put in over the last five months. And it wasn't meant to be a criticism, I'm just.
Oh, sure, I didn't take it as a criticism.
If if you're deferring the responsibility to the to myself and my colleagues and we need relevant data to to make those kind of decisions. So I appreciate that you're going to provide updated data. And you'll send that, is it going to be published publicly or sent to the superintendents or how will we?
Both, both, which we will send to the school. As I said, it will become a public document on a Thursday. I don't know exactly what time, we'll try to keep the time as consistent as possible. And we will also push it out and maybe we'll push it out to the superintendents a couple of hours before it goes public, if that can be helpful for you. But as I said, that's something that we we really see as an important tool at the community level to monitor how we are doing with the pandemic. And schools are a very important component of that, but not not the only one. There would be many other parties who are very interested in that data.
One more question you had, you mentioned earlier that that maybe a school, a particular school might, the the suggestion would be to do learning from home rather than in the building. And I want to make sure I'm clear on what you're recommending. So so if they, there's a hotspot in a certain neighborhood or whatever, then that school might do online. But but other schools, within typical schools, could still exist in buildings? Is that accurate from what I understood?
I I I don't think that's going to be a likely scenario. I think what I was referring to is more a situation where you have cases within the school, not so much in the neighborhood. But, you know, it's very possible that you're going to have, let's take elementary schools, because you have more of those. So some elementary schools are relatively close to each other, you know, a few miles apart. It is possible that depending on whatever circumstances occur in each individual school, one of the schools may experience, you know, a couple of classroom outbreaks that could be considered big enough to say you have a schoolwide transmission. And then other schools just a few miles away may have no cases at that time. And then other schools just a few miles away may have no cases at that time. That's definitely a possible scenario. So in that case, we want school administrators to have the flexibility to adapt their decisions depending on the local circumstances of each school. So again, we would work with administrators and making those decisions ultimately will be your decision, but that's why we want to have the flexibility. And you will see that in the document that we release tomorrow. Uh, a lot of times we say, consider, consider. So it's not even a recommendation. We we recommend that you think about it. That's the only recommendation, but not necessarily that you take a certain action. And uh, once again, I want to repeat that, that the risk of being obnoxious, we are not doing that to step away from responsibilities, from taking responsibilities. We just want to respect your role. But we will be able to assist you when you make those decisions. We do understand those are difficult decisions. And you will not hear from us. You know, sorry, I don't know what to tell you. You just do whatever you want. We will always tell you our best informed opinion. Ultimately, though, we want to be clear that that is your decision. You have the authority and the responsibility to make it.
I I appreciate that sentiment, but but the recommendation, you're the public health expert, right? And so to defer that to seven, I'll do respect to our retired physicians on my, my colleagues who are retired physicians, I I'm a little frustrated is too strong a word, but maybe bewildered or or wonder what it would take to have, um, because you have the authority to shut us down. And yet you're making suggestions rather than recommendations. And I think there's a distinction there and I I, if you were on the other side of the fence, I'd probably say, well, that's our decision, step away, but I guess just to there's a subtle difference that you're suggesting, and you're the expert who has the information and and as long as that information is current and clearly communicated, then I suppose we can make that call.
I I I totally understand the dilemma, and I hope you understand also our dilemma. Uh, I I I'm sure that, uh, you know, you're very sincere when you express that opinion, and you also recognize that uh, if we took a heavy fist approach and we started closing down schools right and left, or telling schools which classrooms can be open and which cannot, or uh, whether their 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 kids in this elementary school can come back to school, but those in another school have to stay home. Uh, first of all, it would be unmanageable for us to do that. And second, I believe that most people probably would not appreciate that. And that's probably not the scenario that you are envisioning, I suspect, but but there would be a risk that is perceived uh like that. I have learned uh very quickly in the last few months, dealing with local policymakers, that you know, the what's next question is always around the corner, the corner. So um, hopefully, when you see this document that we're going to release tomorrow, you will feel a little reassured. If if you still have concerns, I'd be happy to come back, you know, next week or whenever it's convenient for you, next meeting, and uh, give you more explanation. But but again, we are going to work together and strike the delicate balance where everybody has a role and everybody respects each other's roles. That's really my hope. You will hear from us, public health recommendations, I can guarantee you.
And with those items, uh, just to add a piece to that, because we do have two other pieces of safety, because we will be talking about athletics this evening, and we have our athletic director and principal of Topeka West here, as well as our A Ds on the line. Additionally, we also have our nurse and our University of Kansas Health System uh also on the line. So Mr. Abernathy, who is on the line from the University of Kansas, has extended testing at Topeka High. Uh, so just making sure to note that so that as we move along, if there are questions related to uh, any matters uh on that regard to forward those. I would like to say that Dr. Brazino has been quite the uh partner for us. Uh, it is how we determine graduation. Uh, so his recommendation was uh, that it was unsafe uh for us to proceed or that there was some concern. If I perhaps state that properly, I don't want to overstate Dr. Brazino, your position at that time. But because his recommendation, and he was clear that he did not recommend that we uh had graduation, therefore we were unable to have our in-person graduation, but we were able to have our virtual graduation. That is one example of a recommendation that we were prepared and will continue to be prepared to act on. In all of our documents and in our plan, it says we will be using health department guidance because what he's just described is the kind of guidance that we will continue to rely on weekly to uh make the best possible recommendation to the board and to make the best possible recommendation as administrators. Uh, the current level of orange, uh, Dr. Brazino, if I say this improperly, please do correct me. But our current level of orange is uh at the higher level of orange and is of concern at this time. And because of that, uh, we are continuing with the plan that we already had in place anyway, which was to delay our opening and to begin in a remote environment. Dr. Brazino, did I properly state the positions? Uh, and Dr. Cooley, in both of those instances with graduation and the orange level, sir?
Yes, actually, thanks for bringing that example up because I didn't even think about that, but that's a good example. I I'm trying to remember the exact words I use in some of those meetings, and Dennis helped me out. But I think it was something on the lines of, uh, you know, we are concerned, this is a lot of people coming together, people coming from different communities, some from out of state. Uh, the size is important. And I think I said something like, I don't think it's a good idea. Dr. Anderson and uh Topeka Public School decided that if this is not, if if the health officer says it's not a good idea, we are not going to do it. Some other districts decided that, uh, you know, we take that into account. Maybe they took some additional precautions and they decided to proceed. Uh, I respect both positions. Again, it's 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 part of my job. It's just to provide that advice and then support whatever decisions you make. Unless, of course, those decisions are so blatantly wrong, and excuse me if I'm over frank here perhaps, but when I say wrong, they 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 present an immediate threat to the health of the students, the staff, or the rest of the community. That's what I would see as intervening and saying, no, wait a minute, you really should not do that. And I hope you will agree to not do that, but if you don't, we are going to issue an order for you not to do that. Um, I certainly cannot even imagine getting to the point with Dr. Anderson and her staff, because we have been working together so well in the past few months. But just to give you a general sense, we are ready to take our responsibility seriously if the need arises. But that example of graduation is a good one. We just said, uh, we don't think it's a good idea, and uh, some people cancel, others didn't. Um, Dennis, anything you want to add to that?
No, I think you described it perfectly. And I think those were your words, as a matter of fact, so.
Okay. My memory is not totally lost.
No.
At this time, and we want to be as respectful as possible to Dr. Brazino's time, I'll stop for just a moment to see if our board president has any other final question. Of course, you're welcome to stay on if you'd like to hear about what we're doing with athletics uh in that regard. And I will a- add a question about athletics before we start that part. Uh, but I'll turn it back over to our board president.
Dr. Bonebrake, do you have a question?
Uh, again, I I appreciate Dr. Brazino and Dr. Cooley presenting tonight. But a swarm of locusts will be descending upon the area here, I think this coming weekend or the next weekend with twenty-five hundred wrestlers from forty different states. And is there anything we can do to minimize the potential consequences of tipping us over from orange to red?
I don't know what event are you referring to? Can you tell me more about it?
There's a national wrestling meet evidently occurring. I think it's this coming weekend, but it may be the following the end of the month. But from wrestler, twenty-five hundred wrestlers from forty different states will be coming to Topeka.
Yeah, Dr. Brazino, I will share that it is not an event that we are involved in or that we are hosting. And since you're not aware of what that event is, if it is okay, then we will forward him the link to that you might have or uh so that he can uh look that one up. But uh, with that in mind, unless you're wanting to answer that particular question, since you're not familiar with the event or any other details.
It was on the news last night.
Let 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 me tell you a real quick, quick answer. We try to monitor these events as much as we can, and I don't do that personally, but I'm involved in some of these discussions. Dustin Nichols, our incident commander, is the one from the Division of Emergency Management and monitors these things. And uh, um, I will touch base with him in the morning, make sure that this is on his radar screen. But I do want to make a comment about mass events. First of all, if it is true that this is going to attract twenty-five hundred people, there was already breaking, they would already be breaking our current order. We have an emergency public health order in place that's been placed for several months now. The limits, the size of any public event to two thousand uh or fifty percent of the maximum capacity of the venue where that event is taking place. So if the information you are telling me turns out to be correct, that would already be not allowed. Uh, second, and uh, without going into many details, we are going to have a a a media event tomorrow where we discuss different things. One is the scorecard. Uh, the other is the increased number of cases in uh our community. And we will also discuss the importance of reducing mass gatherings and public events. So with that in mind, if this information is correct, we'll take a serious look. And it is possible that we 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 may decide to work with the organizers and and reschedule that event.
Looks like it's in Kansas City, Missouri. According to Dr. Google.
So with that, uh, as you, for those
I feel better.
Those who didn't hear, it's not an event in Topeka. With that, uh, the question regarding uh athletics, uh, as we prepare to proceed and um high contact sports, uh specifically the high contact sport that is identified uh by the um athletic associations of football being the high contact sport. Can you share any uh overall information about uh things to keep in mind and or concerns related to that particular sport as a high contact sport? And any other items you'd like to mention regarding athletics in general, sir?
Are you asking me? I I wasn't sure if we still
Yes, Dr. Brazino, from the health standpoint, uh, can you share any thoughts you have on athletics in general, since that will be the very next topic that we uh jump into?
Sure. And I would like also to ask Dr. Cooley then to 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 provide his input because he has done a lot of work behind the scene on uh athletics and sports in general. So um uh, there are two concerns when we have athletic events uh sponsored by schools. One is about the players and the other is about the 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 spectators. There are, as as I indicated a moment ago, we we do have a public health emergency order signed by the health officer, but myself that's still currently in place, been in place since the beginning of June that has two provisions. One is that no public event can exceed five thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand people. And the second is called mass gathering size, and that name I I is very misleading because the mass gathering, actually, what that is is a group of people. You can't have a group of people greater than forty-five unless they can practice social distancing or they belong to the same household. So when you apply that to sports, to contact sports, our um emergency order actually does address that. And what it says is that for contact sports, both teams combine the moment that they walk into the field, not necessarily they are playing, they come out to the locker room. Those two teams combined represent one mass gathering. And the reasoning behind that is that think about football, and forgive me, I'm not an expert of football, so I hope I'm not going to misspeak, but essentially, everybody's going to be in contact with everybody. We can safely assume that throughout the entire evening or or duration of the game, everybody's going to be in contact with everybody. So those two teams combined, when they walk into the field, they are one one mass gathering. So the current limit for them, one mass gathering is forty-five. So if you divide that by two, that leaves twenty-two people per roster for every game. That does not include coaches, trainers, staff, those are nothing because we could don't consider those in the same mass gathering, same group as the players. Same thing for soccer. When they walk outside from the locker room into the field, both teams combined cannot be more than forty-five people. So that will leave about twenty-two for each uh team. Now, I do understand that you only have, in the case of soccer, I'm a little more familiar with soccer than I am with football. You only have eleven people who played any one time, and the rest are on the bench. But they will rotate in and out. And those that will rotate in, they will rotate out, and they would be in contact with, you know, some would be playing defense and offense, and we've always been in contact with some other members of the opposite team. And then those members would be in contact with everyone else in their own team. So I hope you get the idea, it becomes a web of contact that is so extensive that we consider those two teams combined as one group, one gathering. And so they are subject to that limitation of forty-five. Uh, for non-contact sports, we consider each team one mass gathering. So again, the current limit is forty-five. Um, let's take uh baseball. You could have a baseball team with up to forty-five people. I don't think that that happens very often. Again, I'm also not an expert of baseball, but uh, my understanding, it doesn't happen very often. But theoretically, that would be within the limits of our current order. The second portion, I, as I was saying at the beginning, is on spectators. The limit right now is two thousand. And those two thousand people still need to be clustered in groups of forty-five that are then separated from each other at least six feet apart and don't mingle with each other. So what the means in practice is that if you open up your stadium, let's assume that your stadium can contain five thousand people. Your limit is either fifty percent of your capacity or two thousand, whatever each whichever is smaller. In your case, a smaller number is two thousand. So you can host up to two thousand people. You would have to make provisions so that those two thousand people can spread out on the bleachers in a way that no group would be greater than forty-five and each group would be separated from other groups by six feet or more. That's essentially what provisions apply to sports and athletics in schools. One final comment before I I see if Dr. Cooley has anything to add. As I said, we we are considering what additional measures we need to take to reduce the level of community transmission. And uh, those level of two thousand and forty-five were decided at the beginning of June when the situation was quite different. Uh, we are still having internal discussions, and I'm not ready to to, you know, discuss any specific information. But you need to be aware that if we make changes to those level, again, forty-five and two thousand, those changes will be applicable also to your athletic environment and any other extracurricular activity that you you do with your your students. Dennis, anything else you would like to add?
No, well, not really. I mean, I think you covered everything. Um, I think they have to understand they have to understand too what's going to happen with individual players. So an individual player who you're you're very, could easily have an individual player on a team who is positive, at which point especially something like football or anything, trying to say that I mean, you almost, it's going to be very difficult to say that that other players did not have some kind of close contact. And once they, I mean, all your close contacts are going to be in quarantine for two weeks. And um that means that it could possibly be that your entire team is in quarantine for two weeks. It could be that half of your team is in quarantine for two weeks. Those are po- real possibilities. Uh, and uh, so those are, and it could be that the other team that you played with is. If a team from an opposing or a player from an opposing team is positive during, and you find out and they played in a game, now your team has been exposed to. Uh, so this gets real complex, especially with the individual players. Um, and there, I'm, it's uh players are going to be out if they have positive, whether they are asymptomatic or not, they're out the ten days at least, if not longer. And there's uh at least some recommendations that individual players should take another two weeks after they are out of isolation uh because of possibility of myocarditis. So those are just that's not exactly what we're, as public health, are going to be involved with, but those are things that I think you're going to have to think about, at least uh with some of these sports, especially in the fall.
And with those sports, uh, the question then regarding that And with those sports, the question then regarding that number of 45, is it possible to have a team that is larger than 45 that comes on the field but is then separated by groups of 45, the players, and isolated in groups in a way where when one team goes in or comes out, they're sitting on a different bench, on a different section of the field, and they are separated from entering the field and exiting the field so that that group of 10 that was mentioned, or 20, could play without interaction with the other group? Is that, and again, keeping that group separated by 45 or less, is that agreeable as it relates to a particular sport that is considered a mid-contact sport? You know, high contact is football. And other sports, I think soccer was referenced, is not considered under the Athletic Association as a high-contact sport. So in the case of soccer, for example, if that team was separated again with different benches and isolated in different groups and even entered the field separately, is that adequate to continue to allow that group of 10 or so to be the cohort that plays at any given time?
Dr. Anderson, we haven't really thought about that scenario. So I would like to study that situation with our team and get back with you and see what the specific circumstances are.
If I may offer, Dr. Pizzino, then for this evening's case, as we talk about our continued observation and evaluation of information as we have done up to this point, we will circle back and share some thoughts regarding separation of sports in the fashion that I've just mentioned and then gain your guidance as we continue to move forward. With that, last sports question, to be the primer for our amazing athletic director, he has been on the job for a month and he's had such an exciting start. And so as he gets ready to come on up, Dr. Cooley and Dr. Pizzino, again, you are welcome to remain. I think the only other question that you, we haven't posed to you, but we believe we pretty much know the answer and perhaps I'll just ask it publicly. From a facility standpoint, there's been quite a bit about filtration systems and we didn't ask that in any of our questions. And is it safe to reopen without having the, and let me rephrase that, I don't believe that I've received a strong recommendation of having to implement the new filtration systems that have been widely talked about in the news that further catch COVID virus items, that's not a necessity to open, am I correct in that regard? Although we are investing in new filtration systems throughout the course of the year. But that's not a necessity to have that in place in order to open, am I correct? It's still safe to open with the social distancing and other items that you've outlined?
So first of all, I prefer to use the term safer or safe enough or sufficiently safe because really there is no safety, unfortunately. It's not an all or nothing situation. But putting that aside, the issue of airborne transmission of this virus is something that has become more visible in recent weeks. I think there is still a lot of work that needs to be done in that area. So the most important elements right now, based on the knowledge that we have, that's been solidified over the past several months, the two most important elements are social distancing and masks. I would really focus on those as a wide and broad implementation. And then, you know, we will keep our eyes open and as knowledge evolves, and as educators, I'm sure that you understand that, as knowledge evolves, so will our recommendations and our interventions. At this point, there is no blanket recommendations that schools install the high filtration systems before school activities start.
Thank you, Dr. Pizzino. So that we know all other items that we do are in addition and over and beyond. But the basic recommendation of social distancing and masks are the two key things that we know we will do certainly consistently throughout. On that note, again, if I had my phone in my hand, I would play the applause button, but I don't have it in my hand, it's across the room. But we just want to thank you for coming this evening and giving us an hour of your time.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate all the work you're doing and we would love to be good partners with you. Let us know what we can do to help.
Thank you. All right, this evening, as Mr. Kathy takes a microphone and prepares to come forward, it's really about teaching and learning, and I hope everyone that's in this space and online really felt like this evening was an opportunity for education. And so it's intended to be that way as last week was. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kathy. He highlighted several things, and so Mr. Kathy's going to talk about those things on the PowerPoint that's coming forward. I will step aside and allow him for Mr. Kathy to be on the camera and to walk us through the PowerPoint. And then our A Ds are online on Zoom and they will close us out. Mr. Kathy?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Over the past several weeks, we have been looking at several different documents and meetings. We have, we'll be referencing the NFHS National Federation of High Schools, their guidance for reopening high schools and athletics and activities. K S D E's document, Navigating Change, Kansas Guide to Learning and School Safety Operations, along with the Kansas State High School Activities General Considerations and sports-specific considerations were all taken into account as we went through this. Over the past several, over the past several weeks, we have held meetings with our superintendent, county athletic directors, health department, coaches to discuss each individual's sports plan and then also what schools in the district or the county are doing as we move forward. We considered the NFHS risk stratification as they looked at the various levels of risk involved with competition. So they categorize into three levels, low risk are activities that basically can be done where physical distance is as possible and nobody shares any equipment or that equipment can be cleaned beforehand. Those two activities that we deal with or we are involved in in Topeka Public Schools would be boys and girls cross-country and girls golf in the fall. Then we looked at moderate risk, which are close contact between participants, but they have the ability to wear protective equipment. But in situations where they cannot, or in situations where they cannot clean the equipment in between uses, those would be like volleyball where both teams would be having contact with the ball throughout the game. Tennis where they have, you know, you could have contact with the tennis ball. Likewise in soccer where there would be intermittent close contact, but not continuous, but you could still wear protective equipment. And then high risk, the only sport in which we participate in the fall season of is football. High risk is where there is close contact between participants and a high likelihood of respiratory transmission, particle transmission without protective barriers available. So that is where we went through with, we kind of pulled all this together to kind of come up with some recommendations from the, for the district. First, we'd like to host a fall and spring Topeka Public Schools Combine. This will enhance social distancing, will allow for individual competitions at a lower risk, that are at lower risk. This event offers measurable skills testing for speed, endurance and strength. With, you know, where we'll have video footage available to share of the participants to share with colleges and prospective recruiters. We would look forward to doing this in November with our senior class only. And then again, in the spring and March with, where we invite all of our potential athletes to participate in that, in that combine where they would have those same opportunities. We would also recommend the postponement of high-risk sports competition per the NFHS definition, which would be specifically football at this time and continue with practices and conditioning. Then with a reevaluation of the sports competition during the first week of September. And then we would also look to eliminate our district-wide competition within the middle school athletic programs with a focus on those fundamentals. At this time, I'd like to turn that part over to Ms. Annette Wiles and Mr. Tim Wilson to complete that portion of the recommendation.
Hi, I'm certain to be and grateful to be here. Thank you for this opportunity to present our middle school athletic proposal. We feel that our middle school athletic programs are really our front porch to Topeka Public School Athletics and also the future opportunities for these young student athletes to work with their coaches, develop life skills and improve their sports-specific skill development. We will outline this in the presentation that will be made by our middle school athlete, our activity coordinator from French Middle School, Mr. Tim Wilson.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to present our fall sports program. For the fall sports of football, volleyball, cross-country and girls tennis. What we'd like to do is move to a competitive format, to an intermural format with a start date of September 14th. However, principals do prefer that we wait till the hybrid start date, so it's something that we can discuss. Group A would attend Mondays and Tuesdays, Group B would attend on Thursday and Friday, and there would be no practice on Wednesdays. This would be for seventh and eighth grade only and parents would need to provide transportation. We will follow Acacia and Shawnee County Health Department protocols for player safety and to minimize the possibility of community spread, schools will not travel and no games or contests, to note, we would have no games or contests for this season and focus on skill development. In this model, students would work on sports-specific skills, actively engage in an after-school activity, a sport of their choice, work with coaches to gain skills for the future, be part of a school team. And coaches would focus on skills and development, engage with students in a positive after-school sport and build relationships with students throughout their, through athletics. Once again, I thank you for the opportunity to present this plan to safely move forward with our sports season.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'd like to take just a minute to thank all of the high school athletic directors and the six middle school athletic coordinators for the time they've put in. Very thoughtful, putting students first and looking for ways to get them re-engaged in school to keep them moving forward and being successful. As many of us know, activities and athletics is the gateway for many of our kids to maintain their schooling and being successful in the school environment. So I'd just like to take them, you know, thank them each and ask if there are any questions at this time.
Yes, what is the purpose of reevaluating the competitions the first week of September?
Coming into the first week of September, that would give us an opportunity to see, one, what it looks, what we have, we've gone through two weeks of practices to see what kind of infection or has been shared with the other schools, within other schools and within our schools to see if we're being able to maintain safety within our school and then within our, the communities within the league schools, if they're able to maintain their students without a high infection rate.
So if not, they get shut down?
Yes.
And when we say shut down, it's actually postponing at this time because our face and approach is such that we can evaluate along the way and and make those adjustments. Since Dr. Cooley talked about that 10-day window or that one-week window, we know that every week things do change, therefore, two to three weeks from now, things may look different. Therefore, the postponement is through that first week of September and it allows other teams to redo their schedules in neighboring districts. And then September the 3rd, at that board meeting, we will come back with an added recommendation related to the postponement of the football season.
So, Mr. Wilson, I would assume that you will follow the same guidelines for football as the, as the high schools. In other words, basically non-contact for-
Yes, yes. What we envisioned is we would have no pads, we would have no helmets. It would just be more instructional and skills.
And Mr. Wilson, the one main piece of no competitions at this time for the middle school was the other piece for this season for the middle school as well.
Yes, that's correct.
So one other question, Mr. Kathy, the combine, I mean, we've all seen the NFL combines. Is that kind of the intent, number one, are the parents going to be there? You know, are you going to have to social distance everybody? What does that look like?
So what it would look like is it, we would, it would not be open for spectators. It would just be for those, so in the November date, we would look at what that, the gathering numbers would be. We would use all three of our high school coaching staffs to help monitor and then also run the times for the different events that would be going on. And if we have a smaller gathering size, we would limit that to maybe one school per day or we'd have a set time for each of the schools to come in to where we were not going above that gathering size.
So this is an action item on our agenda and one of the questions I still have, and I don't, and I understand the health department's going to make a a relook at the recommendation Dr. Anderson suggested with soccer. But I'm still confused is soccer, because it's a medium risk or medium contact. But it seemed like from Dr. Pizzino's comments that it is linked, I mean, he didn't distinguish between medium and high contact, he just said numbers of students. And so I'm just confused on the distinction between soccer and football. You're recommending we allow soccer to occur but not allow football to occur?
Based upon the NFHS guidelines where they have identified soccer as a moderate-risk sport due to the fact that it is not a continuous contact and that athletes could be wearing protective equipment while during the game where that is not as like, where that does not happen during football because of the, some of the rules that are in football, when you are engaged on the field, you cannot wear a face mask. Any face shield has to be clear and usually those don't come past the nose line due to the nature of the safety for the sport.
Could a face shield go full facial?
Not based upon the way that the NFHS rules read, it would not be allowed to go that far down.
One of the reevaluations that we are recommending on that third, it also allows for the health department who has recently shared, they'll have the press conference tomorrow and then they are planning to meet with the athletic directors, I believe, either next week or end of this week. End of this week is tomorrow, so we know over the course of the next week, they, there will be an added meeting. So part of also coming back without removing all opportunity from students is to also allow for that additional conversation, much like what you heard this evening. Mr. Kathy has outlined how the 45 limit for students could be maintained and they could enter the field or space at different times, they certainly could be kept separate. He's extended the benches to have other benches on other sides of the field as well so that 10 students could play without interacting with the other 10 students in that way. So with that, as Dr. Pizzino mentioned, having further dialogue and giving consideration to those things, it allows for that conversation to continue to take place. We first wanted to allow Acacia to make their ruling and then to look at what the other matters are related to the numbers. And at this time, we feel really comfortable with the decision to postpone football and come back on that September 3rd with added recommendations, should there be any other changes.
And that's just one, that's just the first game, right? September?
September 3rd would just include the first, the first game of the football season, so that'd leave you eight games. If everything were to be in order, we would be able, we'd be eligible to compete for the remaining eight games of the, of the regular season.
So based on Dr. Pizzino's, what do you call it, a public health order, so the rest of Shawnee County is?
Right, so based upon his, his county order currently, a team could only have 22 players on the roster. So that would, that, the way it's set up for, for football, that would allow you 22 students on the sideline for each individual team.
Ms. Bulley?
Would we be able to refuse playing a team if we get to the point where we can play the teams? If they come from a county or a city that is in the orange or the red, would we be able to say, we don't feel safe playing with you and having your families come this way? It just sounds so rude, but the reality of, you know, a hotspot coming to us, would- the reality of, you know, a hotspot coming to us, would we be able to refuse that?
Currently, Acacia is working on the wording for any game which cannot occur, and part of what their statement is, any game that does not occur due to COVID reasoning would not count as a loss or a forfeiture on that school. So we are still waiting for their criteria to come out as to what exactly that would look like. But at any point in time, we could say, I'm sorry, we are not feeling safe, or that it is safe for our students for us to compete, and the worst-case scenario would just go down as a forfeit of our team.
Ms. Stuart Campbell?
Yeah, thank you for being here. Okay, so my question is specific to the middle school proposal, and and you stated that a start date of September fourteenth, but principals prefer the hybrid start date. Okay, so what we mean by that is that principals, so phase two, hybrid start date means phase two. And it sounds like what I was hearing before, phase two will probably not happen until we're no longer in orange. Okay, anyway, so so a start date of September fourteenth. Does this mean, so if we're still in, in phase one on September fourteenth, which we most likely will be, does, would this mean that students would go to the, to the buildings to practice?
Yes. So that means that, so students would, we would set up a start time for them. So those students that are, are assigned to Group A would go on Monday and Tuesday. Those groups, students that are assigned to Group B would go Thursday, Friday, and then the middle schools would be communicating that through to parents as to what start time and what that would look like for them to, for arrival at the school. And then, so obviously, if we have an outdoor sport, we would encourage and, and find ways for them to maintain that outdoor without having to go into the gymnasiums or into the locker rooms.
And currently, practices have been occurring for our students throughout the district. And so practices, am I correct in that, Mr. Kathy? And so we're saying that practices that have occurred over the summer and at this time are occurring, that students, you know, where we can engage young people in practice, social distance, we would like to allow them to practice and have independent fundamental activities that they can do. But we would not be promoting competing with other students or competition at any level, actually at the middle school.
Okay, so this, principals prefer hybrid start day. When, when will that be decided?
That's a start of phase two. So, so practices, as I understand it, wouldn't start until phase two is activated.
Okay.
Is that accurate?
Yes, that would be
No school is not going to start practicing until they're physically going to the building Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday.
No middle school sports until phase two?
That is the recommendation of the middle school principals.
Okay.
At this time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions for Mr. Kathy? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kathy.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
So we are asking for support for this proposal. The only other item that we had under superintendent's report is the, just the knowledge for you to know how we will be able to track our students. If, in fact, there is an outbreak in knowing where they are. We are the only district in Kansas that has the Tyler Student Information System. Thousands of districts have it. Some have it where the majority of school districts in entire states that are larger than us have the Tyler system. So with that system, we have the ability to monitor where students are in their movement. Mr. Kip is on the line and will share our enrollment information. And after sharing the enrollment, I'm sorry, Dr. Kip, and Dr. Kip and both, Dr. McDonald, I believe, are both on the line. Following the enrollment, he will give you just a brief update regarding, regarding the manner in which we track cohorts of students. Dr. Kip?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Anderson. As of today, we are at 12,800 and stu, 800 students registered with Topeka Public Schools, which is about 97% of our projected enrollment. At the elementary level, we are 94% registered, and at the secondary level, we are 98% registered. In terms of parents wanting remote options for their students, approximately 2,900 students have opted for a hundred percent remote option for this, at least the beginning of the, the first quarter. And in terms of COVID response, you know, we, the sober reality is that if we do have a student that tests positive, like Dr. Anderson said, we, we have the tools and the instruments to monitor and really track from a bus ride to the school, those kids that may have come in contact with that student. And with the Tyler system, they're, they're introducing a new enhancement to that system that just expedites that report, and essentially a click of a button, we will be able to examine the path of that positive student throughout our district. And, you know, pursuant to state and federal privacy laws, we will work with the Shawnee County Health Department in providing any data that they require for their contact tracing.
Dr. Kip, did you want to show an example of that, or what does that complete kind of your general update?
That's a general update. There'll be more information to come in terms of the details and the mechanics of that. But I think at this point, just a general overview is for the board on what's to come.
So moving from there, I believe that concludes all of the items under the superintendent's report. Of course, we didn't talk about track and golf because, or fine arts or band, or the virtual band camp that's occurring, because those things are still occurring. We really are putting forward to you the areas that we would like to see some adjustment based on the meeting with the athletic directors, principals, and other staff. So I'll turn it back on over to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Next on our agenda are two action items, the first of which is adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget. I'll entertain a motion, we had a public speaker earlier, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt that budget.
So moved.
Morrison, Reverend Williams. Any discussion? I don't see any, so I think we're ready to adopt the budget or vote on the adoption of the budget.
Vote is open.
I'm not seeing it on my computer, but I'll vote aye.
Dr. Bone, break, voted aye.
Aye, okay. Stuart Campbell? You got it. All right. All votes are in, and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mrs. Lister. Second action item is adoption of the recommendation for our middle school and high school athletic programs. Reverend Williams?
I move that the 2020 Fall School Board Athletic Proposal be adopted.
I think we, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Mrs. Bulley offers a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Dr. Bonebrake? Yes, that's the plan, is that they will reassess that after September third is what I see, September third. So we've got, basically, practices have started, and our teams are socially distant when they practice, and following safe practice guidelines per Acacia recommendations. We will postpone and reevaluate after the first week of the season, as I understand it.
Dr. Mickelson, like you, I share your bewilderment about soccer, because we all know soccer is a contact sport. But I'm willing to let that go. The other point I want to make is that the Kansas City, Kansas schools have canceled sports. Not that that should make a difference for us, but
And, and the frustrating part for me is that as schools, districts cancel sports, it's going to be a scheduling for schools that continue to do that, it's going to be a nightmare for, as opposed to a conference decision or a Acacia decision. It's a, it's a frustration for me in that you suddenly have all these holes in your schedule. I think Shawnee Mission School District may have made a similar decision, maybe.
Dr. Mickelson, if I may, although I know it's your discussion, I know Dr. Morrison is staring at me, so I think he would like for me to respond to that, and so I certainly am happy to do so. You know, Topeka has never really followed behind other people that we really determined from our students what's best. We believe that it is best to try to engage students where we can, which is why our students right now are attending Washburn University, as well as the college, taking CEP courses. Because college has started, even though school hasn't started, we want to engage them. We believe that golf and tennis and cross-country and moderate sports that, at least by the standards of the association, if we can safely do that in groups of 10 and keep young people separated and engage young people who have been out since March, we're going to try to do that. But the thoughtful approach, we believe, is based on the feedback we've gotten from all of our community members, is to be flexible and prepared. Therefore, rather than canceling all items that we know the numbers do fluctuate, and there's something to say about two or three weeks' worth of data. So we'd like to, it's such an important decision to come back on the third, and we may have other sports in that space that we have conversation about. But right now, we feel that based on the few number of competitions and right now practices are occurring to proceed. It's, you know, why we didn't have graduation and others did. So in our own county, if we look at Shawnee County, most individuals are full, fully having sports, contact and non-contact, from what we know at this time, although that may change. So if we follow that pattern, we'd be having all sports with no changes. So I think every district, as Dr. Pizino said, makes the decision based on what's good for their children. So right now, I think the recommendation that's been made, we feel confident that that is a way to engage young people in a limited way and socially distanced, but reserve the judgment in a couple of weeks to come back to you, two to three weeks, and have further conversation about if something needs to be more restrictive or postponed longer, which is certainly a possibility. I do want to mention the combine. When the pandemic is over, we will continue to do a combine because we believe that allowing young people to do drills and practices themselves, and our communications team will actually be filming that to help capture tape for every student. And we're sending that tape to colleges for them. So that's a new, a new development out of this, that, to just have the combine. So no matter what happens to the season, every student will have had the opportunity to participate and have their fundamentals worked on and videoed and sent in. So we're excited about, no matter what happens with the season, young people will still have some information that can be sent to colleges, whether the season is full-fledged or not.
If, if Dr. Pizino does not relax his public health order.
Then we will be prepared to follow what Dr. Pizino says is most appropriate to do. He has been very helpful in giving recommendations regarding health and wellness of staff and students. And as he continues to share his recommendation and what he feels is best, or if there is an order that we are required to follow, then we will be recommending certainly on the third that we follow that.
Okay, thank you.
So the only thing, a sports combine is fine, and I would be amiss in not suggesting we do a music combine. Therefore, sending those students to colleges for possible scholarships.
It's wonderful that you said that. We are actually planning some fine arts events as well. Again, tonight was really focused on what, what, what might we change and adjust and reduce? And how will we make up for that? Actually, Chris Reynolds, I asked him to be on the line, just in case you had a question, although that's not the focus of this evening, because we're not reducing things. But Mr. Reynolds has done quite a bit of study. Mr. Reynolds, are you on the line at this time, and would, do you want to give just a two-second piece of what we're doing in the area of fine arts that you feel like might be helpful for the board to know? Just ask some examples.
Yeah, we're pretty excited about number one, being able to continue the fine arts. There are many districts that are deciding to not do the fine arts, but there's a lot of stuff that we're looking at virtually. If you remember during graduation, we had the combined choirs to sing for graduation. We're purchasing some software to be able to do that at the middle school and high school level, both with our vocalists. We're also looking at initiating some different ways of, of having class, maybe for in the hybrid mode, we're going to instruct in the, in person, but then they're going to record at home. Also looking at alternative venues for virtual performances, since we know that we might not be able to perform in person.
And regarding the individual videoing, again, communications team is on hand. So we'll be really looking at, especially as teachers return and fine arts staff returns. If you didn't see the newspaper this past week, there was one of our teachers highlighted with activities they're doing in that space. So we're really looking at how we can capture young people on film who are preparing to go to college, and sending that to the places that it needs to be sent to. So we're excited about that in all areas, and I'm sure there are other areas I didn't mention, but that will be just kind of a universal thing that we do. Thank you, Dr. Morrison, for pointing that out.
So we have a motion, a second. We're continuing our discussion. Is there any other discussion on the motion to adopt the sports recommendations?
I have one other question, just a clarification, that we would be looking at a combine situation for our young ladies and soccer, and our gentlemen, and our baseball, all of our sports, that we'd be able to send that if we don't get to the point where we can play in those sports?
Areas that haven't been reduced, we have not at this time discussed having a full combine for areas that will be playing their entire season. But should there be any adjustments for other sports, then certainly we will have dialogue about how we can capture items on film and still send that to colleges in a timely fashion. But if they're playing their full season, certainly we may not necessarily be exploring the combine as we would with athletics, or as we would in the case of fine arts. We know there's some adjustments there. So areas that are adjusted, we'll be still looking at how we highlight our young people and get that to colleges. Thank you for asking that, Ms. Bulley.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? I think we're ready to vote.
I vote aye.
All votes are in, and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mrs. Lister. Next on the agenda is board member comments. So we'll start, Ms. Stuart Campbell in the back.
All right, well, school boards represent democracy at its local core. We're a keystone of a community, and so I'm sure I speak for all of us when I say that we are, we are reading the data and we are listening to our experts, our education experts, our health experts. So how do we return to school amid a pandemic, satisfying all the criteria for ensuring safety and, and meaningful learning and instruction for all? And I know school boards around the world are, have this, the same really, really difficult question to answer. So we just do the best we can. We just do the best we can, and we ask for grace, and we ask for continued guidance from our experts along the way. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Munoz? Mr. Munoz.
I would say that I think I found myself looking to Dr. Pizzino and all of his expertise and looking for him to give us the exact answer, like, what do we do, right? And I recognized that his response, although he didn't say it directly, was that it's much more complicated than simply transmission rate or any specific thing that we can look at. You know, it's not like when we go to a doctor and and we check our, you know, blood sugar levels, where it's simple, this level, it's dangerous, this level, it's something to look at it, or this level, you're fine, that the fact, because it'd be too easy and too simple, simplistic way of looking at the level of transmission just by a few key indicators. And we have to really look at it and all of the factors and all of the things that make this so complicated and so hard to move forward. And so I think I'm looking at the, you know, the weekly case incidences and the trends, the percent positive tests, all of that. And in addition to that, you know, the things that administration is looking at in terms of staff and and all the whatever, all that it takes to to make our schools function day in and day out. I think I'm reassured that as we begin to sort of immerse in in the complexity of having schools function and and having things set up in a way to where it's safe for students and staff, I think I, the best that we can do is is to be open to listening to to individuals from the county health agency to all of our administration who's who are immersed in this, day in and day out, and know that we should always be open to to hearing every perspective and knowing that there are no experts and we're going to do what guided, we're going to make decisions based on what's best for students and staff. And so I just reflecting as in this last hour, we've had this health discussion, recognizing it's too, it would be too easy to look to an expert like a Dr. Pizzino and to tell us how to resolve this, and there is no easy way. And so I just, I want to communicate that to our students, students who are, you know, expressed frustration to me in emails and also parents, that there is no right answer to it, but that all of us, the more voices we can get involved, the more data we have to be able to make the best decision to move forward. I think the other thing that my hope for students as they as they feel the personal implication of COVID, my hope is that they begin to understand just how much our individual decisions impact all of us as a whole, and to begin to see that that it's that what one person does in one part of our community affects others. And so my hope is that that they take away from this experience, if anything else, that all of us are in this together and that that it can't just be about my own personal, what I want to do, but that what's best for all of us. So, thank you.
Mrs. Bulley?
We are in such an abnormal year, and I wish it were different for all of our community. I want to really thank our high school coaches and middle school coaches for coming together to find some way to create some normalcy for our students to participate and to take some movement towards some normalcy. And I appreciate all the time and effort that they have put into that, and I thank them for that. It seems like it's been a very heavy meeting, and so I wanted to like celebrate some of the things in our district. Quincy has received a 21st Century Grant to assist with their students, and it was, I believe, a $65,000 grant to help their students. We know how important our Quincy School is to our community. We have a Carl Perkins Grant that was given to our high school students that are looking at skills and moving in their careers. We had a teacher, Nancy Armstrong, who became a publisher of a children's book. How awesome is it that we have teachers that are becoming authors? Cam Lehrer from Topeka High has collected so many masks for all of his fellow students. I know he has a committee that has helped him also. But along with doing that, a man named Joe Miller, who has some difficulties of his own, has felt so empowered by being able to make these masks for these students and bringing our community in. United Way, Washburn University, West Side Baptist Church, all of these people are collecting school supplies to help our students to be able to be as successful as possible, and no matter what comes this school year, our community just reaches out and unfolds us, and I just so appreciate that. Ms. McCoy received the Kansas Woman of the Year. How do we have so many winners in these categories in our district is because our staff is so incredible. And a partnership with Cox, Cox has stepped up to help provide internet Wi-Fi for our students. How can we ever thank a community that have reached out to us like that? And then my last and final is to thank our board members, my fellow board members, and Dr. Anderson and her leadership team for their courage to make the decisions that have to be made to keep our students and our teachers and our families and our community as safe as possible. We're making such hard decisions that are heartbreaking, but we want everyone to be, come out of this year successful and healthy and alive. So thank you for your leadership in this. Thank you.
Thank you for those encouraging words, Mrs. Bulley. Dr. Bone?
I would like to see testing to see how effective our online learning is. And since I think it is, to some degree, it's inevitable that we have online learning, you know, small school districts, Western Kansas, five people in a graduating class, they'd have more classes available if they were online. But could we have more smaller breaks in the school year? And not the three-month break? This, of course, means, as I brought it up before, year-round schooling, but fewer hiatuses from the experience of learning. Yeah, more smaller breaks, like the rest of the world. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Morrison?
Very briefly, we need to, as as a board, I I I'm with Mr. Bulley that, you know, we stick together, and there's a lot of political things going on out there to try to push us into everybody, all kids going to school. We saw lots of good reasons why that, at this point, shouldn't happen. So we need to listen to our health officers. We need to be in contact with our administrators before we change what we're doing, you know, start virtual school and and before we go to the phase two. And I really appreciate Mr. Kathy, and I think he probably is already gone, and what he's done with the athletic thing, because I really had a lot of problem with contact sports like football, doing that with the COVID. So really appreciate and the administrators working together with that. And, you know, we didn't cancel everything, and that's good, so that we can reassess. And hopefully, we can get kids doing normal activities. So thank you, guys, very much.
Reverend Williams?
I would just like, again, second everyone else's comments in the report out. I'll be participating in a Zoom conference next Wednesday entitled Equity Student Access and Student Agency. So looking forward to it. Appreciate all that our health officers are doing to try to keep us informed, because what we don't want is an uptick and surge, because we'll be back to where we were in March.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. Just very briefly, just recognizing that we have three weeks before start of phase one, four weeks before students are back in the buildings at the earliest. And so we have an opportunity to learn a lot ourselves and watch some numbers and see what happens in surrounding counties and districts and make some wise decisions based on that. So kind of wading in and rather than diving in headfirst is, I think, a prudent approach. So I'm appreciative of the work that's been done by Dr. Anderson and her staff to thoroughly consider the needs of students and not only their safety, but their ability to participate in extracurricular activities and how important that is in their development as well. So I think we've got a wise plan, and hopefully, we can reintroduce everything if we can keep our masks on and social distance. That concludes my comment. So with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.